Terrific. All right, thank you. Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. And if you can start by standing and share the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
The flag.
Of the United States of America.
America.
And to the Republic.
Republic.
For which it stands.
Stands.
One nation.
Nation.
Under God.
God.
Indivisible. With liberty and justice.
Justice for all.
Terrific. Thank you so much. Okay. Uh, so with the meeting called to order, we are going to go ahead and uh, although we don't typically do this for committee of the whole meetings, we'd like to take a moment to open the floor for public comment if there is any.
And I don't see any attendees on the call here, John.
Okay. Well, in the absence of a of public comment, let's go ahead and get the meeting started. This today's committee of the whole is a is really a a single topic discussion for proposed line extension policy changes. Um, and so with that, let's go ahead and give Dan harms the the floor and why don't you walk us through uh, the the topic of the day?
Thank you, John. Um, we do have a a policy that we run, sorry, a policy, a presentation that we pulled together for a year to review the policy. And I'll go ahead and get that shared and fired up. Are you seeing the full screen now?
Yes. Thank you.
We'll move on from here. Okay, yeah, thanks for for joining us today. Just sort of real quickly cover what our objective and an agenda is for today, of course, as as John mentioned, we have the single item on our agenda today, which is to to view, view and look at the line extension policy and develop a recommendation for the for the full board, the board upcoming board meeting here. And for a little more granularity on the agenda that we'll be covering, uh, first, we'll discuss any public comments that we've received, um, cover any kind of the background information that that led us up to this point. And then we'll briefly cover some of the proposed changes. Um, one of the things that we've considered in this proposal for you is a is a little bit of a transition from where our incentives going to maybe more focus on an affordable and workforce housing proposal. We'd like to to get your thoughts on and feedback. And then we'll we'll end it with a motion recommendation that you could bring to the full board. And feel free to stop me at any point as we're going through here, but um, first, just to give you a little bit of background on the timeline that we we've had as we've gone through this. I think it's been a a very enlightening and productive timeline or review as we've gone through this. First, we started off with obviously a proposed policy, some ideas that we've had and reviewed that with our internal stakeholders. We felt it was very important to get the input of people that use this policy day in and day out, and that's our um, engineering clerks and our our staking engineers, engineering type of folks, and as well as the operation guys after it gets to construction. So getting good feedback from them on uh, any policy challenges that they've had in the last several years or since we've modified this uh, previously. So that was good feedback. From that, we were able to develop a a red line policy and start bringing that to some committees. Now, we we started with the uh, the finance committee and got some review and feedback from them on November 10th. And shortly thereafter, a few days later, brought that to the policy committee. And that was our first shot at bringing that to the board and introduction to the board. We we got some good feedback from that. Um, found some holes that we were missing, went back and uh, got some more details, some more examples, brought that back to the committee on policy then again on December 7th to where we took a little bit deeper dive. Um, able to to focus in on the the matters at hand then. Then uh, from what resulted from that committee on policy, as you recall, in our last board of directors meeting on uh, December 15th, was that we made the recommendation to go ahead and publicly post it, um, so we could start our our 30 day notification period and start obtaining any kind of feedback that we could might want to get from the public on that. And now, uh, here we are on on January 12th at the committee of the whole. We're going to review the line extension policy now with the full board of directors. Try to get input from those that we haven't heard from yet. And then that'll be followed by our board meeting on January 18th, where we hope to have the final approval on this policy if if uh, we're all in agreement on where we're headed here. Um, so going on from here is the first thing I'd like to address is the is the public comments. Like we said, we didn't see anybody on the uh, on the call here today. Um, talked to our engineering clerks, all of our customers center, no emails came in. So we've we've really received zero public input from uh, from the proposed policy that we had had posted online, uh, put a notification in the local papers and uh, no, no comments or feedback on that. So moving on. And and now this, and now and I'll say this is the opportunity that we're going to have for additional input from our from our board of directors and maybe any kind of uh, um, chattering you've heard from constituents amongst the community as well, too. So a little more background here. First off, what is that line extension policy? I know we've uh, have had three committee meetings and many of you guys have probably heard quite a bit on this, but I know that we have some new directors here as well. That may not be very familiar with our line extension policy. So what this policy does is it governs um, when somebody walks into their off into our office and they need a power line extended to a, you know, let's say a single family home, somebody's building a new house, they need power extended to it. Or it could be a new developer, a new subdivision. Somebody needs a new our our grid to be extended further to to power their their house or business. This line extension policy governs how that occurs. It establishes those those terms for installation, residential developments, commercial services, industrials, all all those there. And a good question came up in one of our previous discussions that had committed the whole, which is, okay, so where does this show up in LPA's budgeting? And that's what I'm trying to demonstrate with this slide here. And really, the budget that it shows up in is our capital projects budget. And there are three projects in there where you're going to primarily see these dollars show up. Um, the first is project code 101, which is for overhead services. We have another project code for underground services. And another one for services to increase capacity for, and we'll get into some more details of what those are. Um, when we look at uh, how much we spent in 2021 on each of these projects, the the winner by a long shot was the underground services. Our policy is really any new line extensions that occur today are going to be underground. Um, there are some extenuating circumstances where if a system's already overhead and it's just a few spans, maybe we'll keep that overhead. But the bulk of extensions that occur today are underground. And then we do have this category called services to increase capacity. That's where somebody might be upgrading from a 100 amp service to a 200 amp service or 200 to 320. They need more capacity in their house. This governs that. Now, this is how much that first column, it shows how much that cost of construction actually was. Then our line extension policy is what sets forth how much of that is paid for by the developer, by the person asking for this upgrade or new line. And then the remainder inherently comes from our membership. So that's this is the funding that comes from our membership. Although the bulk of it does come from the the developer, the person asking for the the line extension, there is still a significant amount that is paid for by our membership. And that's shown for 2021 here. And then the next column over is what we talk about. Um, if we were to implement the changes that we're going to be talking about here, this would be the new funding requirement that would come from our membership. It doesn't eliminate it all, but eliminates a good portion of it. You're seeing that uh, we're dropping something that's where we've been asking our membership to pay for 600,000 down to about 200,000 here. And then the last column here is that additional amount that difference here would be collected from the developers instead of our membership. Kirsten, I see you have a question there?
Yeah, and we'll actually go throughout the uh, the presentation. When you use the term developer here, you're also referring to a single homeowner, right?
Yeah, they are. Yep, they're they are the the developing entity for that. So when I guess when I say developer, sometimes that's like a subdivision developer, it could be a commercial developer, it could be a single family home.
Yeah, the the reason I ask is I never get any questions from developers. I only get questions from residential folks saying, oh, well, my son, you know, bought this land and now he's going to have to pay all this money. So it's it's interesting. I I'll probably hear from developers after this, but I don't hear from them now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. So let's get into the the why here, uh, why these revisions are needed. Now, um, if you've you've done some homework, I know we've we've shared out some of the NRCA um, purpose of the line extension policy, what role direct directors have in this. Um, there's a, there's a pretty good video on that that we've shared out. Uh, you you'll find that it really turns a lot of, there's a lot of philosophical decision making that goes behind this, you know, is there a black and white, right or wrong? Um, maybe not. A lot of it is philosophical. What is the need within your service territory? Um, that should um, maybe direct how you form your line extension policy. Um, traditionally, um, and if I go way back when on when line extension policy at La Plata Electric was first developed, it is there largely to encourage growth in our area. Um, both economically, both just getting more people in here, the philosophy being the more people that live in the area, the uh, the more electric sales that you have and the healthier your cooperative is. Uh, that has changed as time has gone on and has uh, has moved from something that was a very gracious line extension policy where we were giving up to $11,000, um, even in my tenure here, I remember an $11,000 credit being given um, towards line extensions now down to about 1,500. Um, so those have have moved because people desire to live in Durango and and oftentimes coming here regardless. Um, and so the you could say the needs have changed a little bit, but as far as if I just go through what these um, key elements are that have changed, they're promoting the need for this this change in policy. One is the outdated fee structure that we have. Um, since we haven't updated our our policy in quite some time, that um, our our fees have not necessarily kept up with inflation, so there's something to be addressed there. Um, other is a consideration for financial health. Um, we've we've looked at um, you know, wanting to keep our rates lower than 70% of our Colorado peers. Um, what are some mechanisms by which we can ensure that we keep those rates low? Well, one of those is asking less from our members to be paying towards that. And so it turns into more of a a growth pays its weight type of thing. Um, and that overall reduces our capital expense, reduces the amount we have to borrow, reduces those loan costs on that. So Tim, I see you have a question there?
Yeah, Dan, the $1,500 you referred to, is that under the current or the new policy?
That's a of the current policy. When we talk about the the credit, um, we'll talk about removing a credit, um, that was a, and it's it's actually a calculation based on a few different factors from our cost of service study. But it right now they're getting a $1,500 credit towards construction.
Thanks.
Um, yeah, Dan, just backing up a little bit to that previous chart that showed how much it used to come out of the membership and how much it will. And I just wanted like, um, broadly speaking, like if if the shift is the idea of like the developer carries the cost, why isn't it zero up there in the right end column?
That's a good question. Um, so because sometimes when we go and develop jobs, we see other things on a system that need to be taken care of. And those end up being right and rightfully so, La Plata Electric expenses, they get categorized into the same component here.
Okay, so we're so we're fair about saying, hey, while we're at it, we got to do this and that to upgrade the system and we bear those costs.
Yes, that does happen.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I appreciate what you've done, and I think it's philosophically the right way to go. And obviously you're not getting pushed back on that and um, sounds like it's healthy financial move, so appreciate that.
Sue?
Okay, I've got the back to the $1,500 uh, credit. If somebody, let's say a developer, a real developer has bought lots and it signed a contract with La Plata that when they those lots, they give that 1,500. When we implement this, will they still get that 1,500 or will this be retroactive?
No, they have a signed contract with us, so they still would get their 1,500. That's why um, and I'll get to this in the presentation here in a little bit, but we talked about a balance sheet item that we have. And those are the the IOUs, so to speak, and those per lot refunds. That contract, if they signed it today, would go for 10 years. And so that would be an active liability for the next 10 years, um, that would gradually come off the books.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, back to why these revisions are are needed here, the the other element I want to hit on is that it's um, our our need, the needs have changed both at La Plata Electric and within our community since we've last looked at line extension policies. Um, we now want to be able to support more distributed energy resources and beneficial electrification strategies as we go forward. And so when we start looking at how to best focus and use some of these dollars, that might be, you know, a different strategic goal that we're we're more focused on. Um, also that that change in the need of the community. Um, we've talked with with several of the the community development leaders and have asked, you know, as you're trying to develop these communities, what do you see as that need? Is there a need to uh, carte blanche, have a credit for everybody that comes into this area, or do we need to focus these a little bit more? And the the overwhelming response was we don't need to be necessarily incentivizing developers. When I say developers here, I do mean that in the true sense of the word. Um, they've they, nobody would go as far as to say, no, we we don't want to help a a single family home get built. But where the real focus of the need should be is on affordable housing and workforce housing. As the the feedback that we received from that. And so if we can sculpt and change some things that accomplish that, I think we're going to have a better, healthier policy. Kirsten, you have a question? Okay.
Thank you. So looking at the beneficial electric issue goal. And in that arena, our biggest competitor over here in Pagosa, we use Black Hills for gases. Is it Black Hills over there too? So what is Black Hills pension policy and are they more generous in that because they're going to be trying to to get the business? That we're also.
Yeah, that's a interesting question. I I don't have their policy sitting in front of me. I do know that Black Hills is getting very aggressive on making a more generous line extension policy because they see losing market share. Um, we're seeing sort of the that that's because they're coming to all electric now. And so they they are getting a little more aggressive, I believe, on their line extension policy. I'm not quite as familiar on exactly what they're what they're offering on that. Um, but everybody, when you when you build a house, you're going to have electricity to it. Do you want gas to it? Um, and that that's more of an optional type of thing. That's why they have to be a little more aggressive. Because there 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 is a lot to be saved and that that's one of the things we really hang our hat on is that if you're going all electric, you do not need to put in the gas infrastructure that comes in from the road to the nearest point.
Is there a is there a jump off point like um, where you have to 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 put in a bigger line to a home if they're going all electric because they're going to be doing their heat and their water heater and stuff, or or pretty much if you wire them for one thing, you've wired them for most everything.
It depends if you listen to the electrician and their sizing calculations or you look at reality. Um, you know, we will have people come to us all day long that say, I need a 320, I need a 400 amp service. And it's usually grossly oversized. Usually a 200 amp service covers most bases unless it's a very, very large home. Um, that's that's one of the things that we are in, especially Ryan and his group, um, have to, one of the challenges they face every day is to um, reasonably size our services. Um, but even with the all electric now, when you, I you know, I'm building a home right now, I'm going all electric. I've got room for electric vehicle charging, all electric heat, and I feel confident I can do that with a 200, a standard 200 amp service.
And then we, so then return on investment from between like a 200 and a 400 is four, 400 isn't twice as expensive for us to install, correct?
It's not, not on our part.
Okay, and then but we're also not seeing, we're very rarely seeing any increased return than if we had done a 200. What you're saying, we're we're not seeing them use more electricity than if they'd just done a 200.
They're gonna, yeah, they're gonna use that same amount. Um, we want to wisely size our services appropriately.
Thank you for the education.
All right. Dan, hang on a second. Uh, Dan, before you push on, um, it sounds like you you're a prestructured presentation, or if you're getting, if you think you're getting to a lot of these questions, would it be better to to run through your presentation top to bottom and then field questions at the end?
I I could certainly do that, John. Yeah, I think uh, or if I if I if I get a question, I know it's coming, I'll I'll punt that off until the the slide comes up to.
Okay, so that sounds great.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So the the general flow from here is that we're now going to go over six of the primary changes that we're proposing on the line extension policy. Um, you should be familiar with these, the same six that were given to you in the in the memo when we approved the posting of the policy. So we'll uh, have an opportunity to go through these, but this is going to be in a very summarized manner. The details exist in that memo, uh, but I'd be welcome to to cover those. Let me run through all six of these and then we can come back and discuss each one um, as we go through them. Let's go about it that way. Um, the first one, we talked about upgrading services. Um, you'll right now, LPA's policy is if you show that you are increasing load at your house because you're installing a hot tub, you're doing something along those lines that cause it to go a need to be for a higher service, then we will give you uh, the service wire upgrade and a transformer wire, a transformer upgraded LPA's cost. That has been strongly taken advantage of it. Like I said, electricians can size and make the size requirement be that um, somebody just gets a free service out of it. So that's been somewhat abused in the past. Um, the the benefit from that La Plata Electric does not justify the us investing in that. So we're proposing the elimination of that, which we uh, would result in recovering 28,000, a little more than $28,000 a year less from our membership for that. And then uh, number two, we talked about that $1,500 residential construction credit that applies to single family services. It also applies to residential developers. So if there is a subdivision, they get $1,500 back per lot as they are developed. Um, so that sits out there as a liability until they bring in a certificate of occupancy. And with those with those changes and eliminating that credit, we're expecting to recover, have to recover um, $124,000 less from our membership. And then we have the removal of the indeterminate commercial refunds. And this one gets a little bit complicated. Uh, hopefully you've read through some of the examples that were in the memo. But basically, if a new hotel, a new grocery store, new restaurant comes in, a new well pad um, comes in, they would pay for everything upfront, but they're eligible to get that money refunded back to them over 10 years not to exceed 10% of what they gave us a year and also tied to their usage. Um, and we just don't feel that well, it's not that we don't feel the 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 data is showing when we're asking our customers, you know, did this credit make a difference? Did this refund make a difference on whether you're going to put this line extension in or not? The overwhelming answer is that did not. And so that's why we feel that is a justifiable um, recovery of another $235,000 that could save our membership there. Then we talked about uh, the inflation we've had over the last few years. It's been several years since we've updated the fee structure in our line extension policy. We're proposing to update um, a few of these, the residential, commercial, and then there's a different one for modifications that will also help cover the costs that we're spending to design these lines here. And then the last couple don't necessarily have dollars associated with them. It's more of a streamlining effort um, for consistency and clarity in the policy. Um, there was some language in there that was a little confusing on uh, how the engineering fee, design fee is applied. Um, it said it, you know, could be applied or at the association's discretion could be applied, and we're just going to make it very clear that it's not because that's been our practice, not applied to the cost of construction. And then the last edit that we got feedback on was consistently treating uh, rental lights when they're requested. We were treating private lights a little bit differently than commercial lights. This just makes them for consistency, all the same. We're treating them as we would commercial lights where they pay for the the initial installation of the light and then we maintain it thereafter. So I know that was a a mouthful of changes there. Um, is there any that somebody would like to go back and touch on a little bit more? Yes, caller.
Yeah, could you go over that number five again? I'm not too sure I quite caught what you were saying as far as the engineering fee, please?
And uh, Ryan, do you want provide some light on that? I think you could talk to her better than I could.
If you can find us unmute. Yeah, I apologize. I was not prepared for that. Um, I I can address that. So um, the current line extension policy says that the engineering fee or the design fee that's paid upfront may be credited to the cost of construction, so may be credited to the actual cost of the new line at the association's discretion. So personally, I've got a lot of pushback being like, well, it says in your policy, you could credit it. When do you do that? And I say, I've never done that. And so really, it leaves a door open for interpretation. And so this change would suggest that we cannot credit the design fee towards the cost of construction.
And basically, the design fee pays the design costs.
So the developer would still pay it, it just can't be applied to the cost of construction.
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, could you walk through why or how we would zero out this liability?
Yeah. And so let me see if I can, let's just take this indeterminate one here. Um, as I was mentioning with Sue, we have um, contracts in place that have been signed, let's just say over the last 10 years, because those are the only ones that are active right now. And um, from all the contracts that were signed over the last 10 years, there is a liability. So if a line extension was $100,000 to put in, yeah, we sign a contract and saying, hey, you can get all $100,000 back if you're using enough power. And so we hold that $100,000 of the liability. And the first year that comes up, they're eligible for $10,000 back. But maybe they only used enough electricity to get $9,000 back. And Carl can correct me if I'm wrong, but we would give them that check, that refund that year for $9,000. And then we would oh, I I forget what the the word for it is, but basically uh,
True.
No, it's like, it's a forfeiture is what the 10, the other 10,000 that they or the other uh, yeah, the other 10,000 they didn't get back is quote unquote forfeited. Then it's then that's also no longer a liability either. However, the other remaining 90,000 that they could still get over the next nine years still sits on the book. We go through that exercise again in year two, in year three. And so every year, at least 10% of that liability from that particular contract goes away. But the later years are always carried out. So right now, we have for commercial refunds almost 5.8 million dollars of refunds that we could potentially have to get back if those customers use enough power. But at the end of 10 years, once that last contract was signed, then we have no more liability out there because we would have either, they would have either forfeited or we would have refunded it by that point.
All right, so the so you're saying the current liability declines to zero within 10 years. Not that we're changing policy eliminates that liability at the beginning. It's over, it's a declining.
That's right. Yes.
Perfect, thank you. Um, one other question is about the engineering. Or I guess it's the application. Or I guess it's the application fee, right? That's the same thing as the engineering fee?
That's right.
Got two different names there. So that increase is that, what's that based on? Is that based on actual cost recovery or anticipated cost recovery?
Yeah, and Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, but he'll go through and look at how much engineering time that we spend on these projects. Now, they can vary. They aren't all exactly four hundred dollars, but this is a good representative figure that would cover those expenses if we implement that. Right now, we're falling short on that. So if somebody designs a job and then walks away from it, right now, we have not collected enough to cover that cost on average. With the proposed, with the proposed fees, we will.
Okay, and that, that's just cost recovery basis, right? Not a margin.
Yes.
Thank you.
Joe, what can I help you with?
Yeah, a couple of questions. So I'm concerned about the fifteen hundred dollar fee. You know, if someone is building their own home and, and it's one off, I can see how that would be a, you know, a good thing to do. But if a developer is doing ten, fifteen, fifty, sixty lots, he's got some economies of scale built in there. And it seems that that fifteen hundred dollars seems high to me. You know, it seems to me it should be more, you know, if you're building on more than ten lots, it should be, you know, five hundred dollars per, per lot. Anyway, any, any comment on that? I, I ju, I just think we, you know, I think we need to treat single family home people different than a developer.
And so I want to make sure I got the language. You mentioned fifteen hundred dollars and a fee. This fifteen hundred dollars is a credit that's going away.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's what I meant, fifteen hundred dollar.
Credit.
Yeah.
Okay. And so the way this, just for clarification is.
That eliminates that.
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Now make, makes sense now?
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right. Now, I'm gonna move on from there if there's no other questions on those changes. And, you know, because I talked about this, a very, a very philosophical type of discussion that we're, we're having here. Where can the association, association best direct its funds or does it need to direct its funds? And some of, from some of the feedback we've gotten from, like I said, the, the community development arena, even some feedback we've gotten from the board is this desire that, that maybe just instead of helping all development that, that focuses in a little more on affordable and workforce housing. So, you know, and hearing that, we wanted to bring to you a proposal that, you know, is what's rolling around in, in our head that we think is, seems to be a good fit for the projects that we've seen come through here. We all, we all know this is a, a need in our area. And, and we've had people come knocking on our door, you know, whether it be county entities, town entities, asking about what we might have that can assist with that. And we really haven't had much in the form of a program to be able to offer. However, what we, we have done, I'll, I'll get in here in a little bit, is, you know, maybe using some, some pilot project mechanisms that we, we have to help with. And, and that just sort of helps put an exclamation part, point behind that need. And that maybe we should have a more official program that, that can help assist with that. So I want to run through some, some things that we've been thinking about here, see if this lines with what you were thinking as well. You know, first off, what, what considerations are we, we looking at here? Why are we needing to do this? We've talked about that, that issue already with the community development leaders. That's their, their number one priority that they see as a need is that, that need for that housing. They did add to that. They didn't feel that the incentives for the developers were needed at this time. We've even heard that back from developers themselves when they walk in our door and they'll say, oh, I didn't even know you had a credit. Yeah, I'll, I'll take that. Why not? Is sort of where it comes down to, because it's honestly not large enough to make an incentive to, to tilt things one way or the other. So I really think that we can take tho, that, that amount of funds, redirect that and have a better, better thing. Other considerations, we talked about, does this belong in a line extension policy? What is the, what other things should we consider? Is this just going to be for new construction or does it need to be applied for some existing structures also? And we really didn't want to tie ourselves to only being focused on new construction. There may be some needs that have existing homes that can be retrofitted to fit this affordable workforce housing niche. So we, we wanted something that could address new and existing homes. And something that was a little more adaptable than maybe our, necessarily our line extension policy is. Since our line extension policy has fees in it and other dollar mechanisms can, can, it's treated as a tariff. We have to post it for thirty days before we can change it. And it's, you know, it's a pretty complicated, complex policy that we don't want to be opening up all the time. So we did want, as another consideration, that this be a, a modifiable policy that can adapt with the needs of our community. And we also wanted to focus on benefiting the homeowner more than the developer. That's where the need is, is actually from the homeowner. So the more we can do to get that there, it doesn't do us any good to give a discount of a couple of thousand dollars to the developer and then they still charge the same amount, not saying that happens every time. But if we can make sure that it ends up in the hands of the homeowner, we feel that it makes, it makes a better program. We also want to, to focus on controllable loads too. You know, we can give incentives, but let's not just check one box, let's check multiple boxes. Let's look at helping the member and having that member help Lapla Electric. And so if we can assist with the technologies and the energy efficiency aspects that go into the house, then if we can control that as well, then that can help our greater membership as a whole. So that's why we, we want to have a focus on controllable load and make that something that makes that unit more affordable in the same stroke for the member. And then all these things do add up to, as I was mentioning, more of a focus on a standalone program and necessarily something that gets housed within the the line extension policy, which is what we're proposing here today. The framework that we're looking at here, you know, we sort of broke this down into, okay, what are the stipulations? What's needed to qualify for, for such a benefit? And then what is going to be the benefit when it comes around? And, and we've kicked around some of the deed restricted concepts that that are out there commonly used with affordable housing. You, you know, we're, we're not just, we, we don't want to be the ones that decide on that. We need to rely on the people that, that do this all the time. The community development leaders, the, you know, affordable housing groups that are already here in Durango, that is really their expertise. So we need to talk to them, find out what is the best mechanism. So there's not a loophole that somebody's just who didn't need the benefit is automatically taking advantage of this. We know there's income qualifications, you know, but what defines workforce housing? We need to work with the community to be able to determine that. The other stipulation is that we want to promote all electric homes in these development, you know, in developments. You know, get consent as this is happening for LPA to control these devices. So that, like we've mentioned, having that win-win type of situation. And if we can put that preference towards multifamily units, we make, know, we all know that makes more economical and affordable housing situation. So these are some of the, the stipulation types of frameworks. Now, I, I'm hoping you weren't expecting that we're going to come to you with a completely polished policy and, and program today. This is going to be a work in progress for us. And I'm going to get to that implementation plan here in a little bit, but this is some of the, the outlines we're working with here. And then when it gets to the benefit side of these things, you know, we can consider waiving the engineering fee. That's something we're, we're commonly asked for if we're charging five hundred to seven hundred dollars for that. That is something we could waive for a properly qualified facility. You know, obviously there's a cost to that. Maybe that comes from some of the, the the deferral where, where our members aren't paying as much for development, they're could contribute towards this instead. And we'll go with these qualified things. We're envisioning enhanced rebates, enhanced incentive for beneficial electrification and energy storage, trying to get that energy equity type of arrangement going there. And then there, there's a lot to be, to be had and on the, the expert guidance that our talented staff can give. It is a complicated area to navigate on what the IRA can actually offer and what kind of advantages that has. And I think there's a lot of benefit to be had from the extra handholding that we can give affordable housing units. I mean, not that we don't want to give that to all of our members, we do. But we can have extra focus that, that gets here because there's additional boxes that can be checked when it comes to affordable housing. That can make it a little more complicated and we want to make sure that everybody's getting all the benefit they can possibly get out of that, that IRA. I'm gonna pause here for a little bit to see if this is resonating with people here. Yes, Ted?
Yeah, thanks, Dan. Obviously, I've, I've seen everything up until this new program framework several times. And so I'm going to reiterate my kudos on, you know, the amazing job that, that, that you and your staff has done to really do a great job of reviewing and revising the line extension policy. You know, I thought that was amazing. I think that what you're putting forward to, to sort of address some of the questions that came up during the review of that line extension policy about, well, if we're not going to subsidize this, what should we subsidize? I think you've done an equally excellent job at, at sort of beginning to paint a picture of what could happen and, and doing it in a way that that honestly and, and appropriately really does focus on what's good for LPEA. You know, yeah, I think we should listen to the community, listen to the, to the you know, growth community, development community within the territory, but any decisions we make, I think really should benefit LPEA. That really benefits all of our members. And then I want to also put in a big yes vote for, for, for segregating these two things. So the line extension policy, great work. We've seen it a bunch of times. I have no complaints. I think it's exactly what we should do. And I think it's, it's a good move in and of itself that, that honestly, from my perspective, even if we didn't have this discussion about, you know, what do we do with the savings? I'm still voting yes for the line extension policy. I think that's great work and, and it really will benefit all of our members. I think it's also important to realize that, that what we're doing with the line extension policy doesn't really generate revenue. It's just savings. And, and you know, people could argue with me like Abraham Lincoln, you know, a penny saved is a penny earned. But, you know, we're not, we're not going out in there and collecting more money all of a sudden. So it's savings and, and we can decide how we should apply it. But I do really want to again, put in my emphasis on making this distinction between we're doing a great job revising this line extension policy and we should broach all of these topics. One of the things that, that, that Joe Lewdowski brought up in one of our discussions previously was, you know, we're, you've, you've clearly spelled out kind of the, the savings that gets developed by this change to the, to the line extension policy. And it's in the neighborhood of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And, and Joe accurately stated, you know, it's really hard to take that amount of money and have any impact in, in terms of, you know, affordable housing, workforce housing. So we've got to be, number one, very creative and, and number two, very efficient if we're going to do anything with that, with that sort of savings if we choose to. So everything you've laid out in the program framework sounds really good. I'll tell you what sounds the best to me right now is, is essentially this educational component, the expert guidance. I know that LPEA has had, well, I don't know this. I think LPEA has had tremendous success. I know that the membership has really appreciated the the guidance that LPEA staff can get over the years on, in terms of like reducing your usage and efficiency and, and insulation and LED bulbs and all, all that kind of stuff. And I think you're, you're a hundred percent right that that sort of guidance is, is not currently available on kind of the funding and rebate side of things, especially with the amount of money that's, that's available through the IRA. So, you know, to me, there's a lot of good ideas here. I'd be more than happy just to pick off the last one and say, you know, take, don't take all four hundred thousand, but take some of that and, and, and heck, hire an employee that can be an expert at that, that could really help our membership. So thank you for listening to those comments.
Thank you, Ted. You did bring up a good point there. I, I do want to make it clear that this is two different things we're considering here. Line extension policy. And then we just wanted to give you some ideas of what we're thinking about with a future program. I, I do have one more slide that comes up here on the implementation plan. So if you have any questions coming up on, you know, some next phases in the pilot projects, I'll be covering that on the next slide. But Joe?
Yeah, great work, Dan. Sorry for my brain fart there on the fifteen hundred dollars. Being on the committee and all, I should have remembered that. But, you know, my feeling on this is having been on the city planning commission, I think, gosh, in the last two years, every development that's come through has been all electric. And there's been a lot of units that have come through. So we're not, you know, competing with gas, gas anymore. I think that word is out. And, and as far as, you know, as far as like a deed restricted housing, you know, there's just not much on the books out there. There is a, I don't know if you've read about it in the paper, but there was kind of like a drawing for some houses over on, I guess it's West Second, North of Thirty Second Street. And, you know, those houses were four hundred and fifty thousand dollars and they're selling those as supposedly affordable. I just don't think that's, you know, that, that's affordable. But that's what almost everything is coming in now. That even, you know, multifamily, there's so much demand for housing. And, you know, the real estate business and everyone's taking advantage of that. My feeling is that the, all of this money should go into our rate stabilization fund, all of the savings. And the reason I say that is because we've got, we know Tri-State is going to be raising rates. And we don't know how much, but I think we're not going to be happy when, when they come through with some of these rate increases. And I think we need to spread the savings out over, you know, the entire co-op. And I think that's, that's the best way to do it. You know, I, as far as expert guidance, you know, I think we do that anyway. We've got, we've got what, two or three people at least who, you know, talk to people about weatherization and conservation and, and, you know, all of our programs. So it, it seems that's already built into the budget. So, you know, I, I like that the staff came up with this. I'm also not interested in, you know, staff's busy enough and something like this, you know, it looks kind of neat here in, in just a few bullet points, but we all know of these things morph and become, you know, a lot greater than, than what they look at at first. So my feeling is, and again, I am on the policy committee, I think we should, you know, we should basically save that money and put it in the rate stabilization fund.
Thank you, Joe. Holly?
Uh, thank you, Dan. I was lucky to get to review all of your package materials this morning. So all my questions have been answered between that and your great presentation between the FAC and the POC as well and Ryan and staff. Thank you, everybody, and you have my vote. Thanks.
John?
Uh, yeah, very comprehensive on the line extension policy. You know, I'm surprised at this last little comma or add-on, wanting to start a program. You know, the, of the six objectives that you were trying to meet, the number one or the first one was remove LPEA subsidized service upgrades. And then I feel like now, we're asking to change those fees and then we, you're wanting a program that is going to subsidize, even after we had several statements from you about residential to pay the same as commercial or, or a single family pay the same as developer. Now we're saying that we want to subsidize it, and I'm I'm surprised by that pretty substantially. The line extension policy, when Ted talked about you know, these are two different things and you you leaned towards that. Because somebody has asked about us if we have a program. I don't think constitutes us needing a program. It starts down that path, but to to subsidize other houses and and to Joe's comment, a $450,000 subsidized house. I wonder, I I don't live in a $450,000 house, so I I'm I'm surprised that you're saying that on the heels of this policy change. That we want things to be universal, and now here's the proposed subsidy.
Yeah, and and John, let's let's be clear too, that we aren't asking for a vote on on this program today. That that is not what we're doing. It's it's just strictly look at these changes in the line extension policy that we've talked about. There's been some some feedback that has voiced concern to direct, you know, maybe instead of subsidy redirecting some funds. The the intention is we're going to get to in the implementation plan here on the next slide is is to look at some pilot projects using the innovative project fund to to maybe look at some of these, then reassess at the end of that and say, is there any? If that helps. So this isn't the development of this program right now. This is just going to be here. Here's something that we could look at. And then we'll we'll look at these these implement these pilot projects coming up. And then coming, we'll be coming back to the board to discuss this in more detail later on. Kirsten?
Yeah, I think the line extension policy changes that you have suggested are fabulous, and it is a tariff, so we do need to to keep it fairly constant. I appreciate that you did do this other part about the workforce housing, specifically looking at what does the community need? Because when we look at line extension policy, part of that is our decision on how much do we want to be involved in economic development? And what we're saying is, you know what? We used to, we used to kind of want to help things grow, so we used to give developers more money. And we're saying, no, we're backing off on that because that's not the number one priority. I'm looking at your slide here. What does the community need in working with economic and community development leaders? Their number one priority is affordable and workforce housing. So if we want to have our impact on economic development, and that is definitely one of our goals, our strategic goals at LPEA, then what we're saying is the community and the economic development leaders are saying, this is the way to do it. So I I appreciate this program. I understand it's different from the line extension policy. I think though philosophically that they feed into each other. If we're going to be backing off of one sort of economic development that maybe wasn't very effective, where can our dollar and our efforts be more effective? And I appreciate that. Thank you.
You made it. Sorry. Thanks, Tim. Yeah, I just wanted to to like follow on after John and Kirsten there because I think it's kind of good bookends. And I really think this is the crux of why, I mean, yeah, it's nice for us to all get together and review something, some amazing work that staff has done. I think we're really unless I hear something differently in the next little bit. We've really kicked this line extension policy over the finish line. But a big part of the reason why we're having this this committee of the whole right now is because as we were going through revisions or review of the line extension policy, you know, we're we're sitting there and hearing, okay, we're we're not going to subsidize this. We're going to keep this money. We're going to keep this money. We're and and it's it gets back to this whole philosophical discussion about how does LPEA want to play? How, what do we feel that our responsibility might be? How are we guided to to benefit the community? And and historically, and I think it was very clear that that, you know, a a long time ago, a previous board said it would be very beneficial to the community to essentially subsidize growth, and and that's what that line extension policy did. And I think it's an easy jump to say, well, if we're not going to subsidize that, what should we subsidize? You know, it almost, in some ways, you could look at it and say, it seems selfish for us just to to not give those rebates and subsidies, and we just keep it all. I say that, and I don't believe it. I mean, I don't believe it's selfish at all. I think if if we're looking at just economic development, in my opinion, the best thing you can do is take all these savings and try and keep rates low, you know, and that's for everybody. Maybe that goes goes kind of hand in hand with 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 Joe's like, you know, really astute comment, like maybe this is rate stabilization fund money. That's a great way for us to limit the negative impact that could happen, all of which is not good for economic development. If if in fact our philosophy is to help not just the membership across the board, but certain portions of the membership, whether it be affordable housing, workforce housing, lower income, anything like that. Again, I think rates are the most, well, until I hear some of Dan's other suggestions, and I'm sure we'll get to that in the next slide, but right now, my feeling is that keeping rates low does all of that, you know, a low rate has a more positive impact on a lower income person than it does on a higher income person, right? It's all percentage of of household income and stuff like that. So I'm I'm a real proponent of of putting this stuff towards rates in the best way we can. And and I wanted to clarify that a lot for John because I I I heard John's surprise in in sort of, okay, we're taking away all these subsidies. Now let's apply some more subsidies, and I and I totally get where that that sort of shock came from, but I did want to comment on why I think it came up through the process and therefore largely why we're having this sort of philosophical conversation today. Thanks.
Yeah, Coler?
Yes, so as far as the line extension policy portion of this, I'm 100% behind the the changes you're making. I think they're very good. I do have at some point in time, whenever it's best, a couple wordsmithing issues I have with the policy itself. And I think the meaning behind that. But before we get to that, one other question, and this has happened in the past, not recently, but I have had members that felt, okay, they got paid back for it. And that was fair because LPA ends up owning what they paid for. Do you think we're going to get some backlash from some of the members saying, wait a minute, I paid for this and then you own it?
Yeah, that's that's
You being LPA?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying there. So I I would say that on a typical line extension that might be $9,000 and we're giving them a $1,500 credit today, that's already the case. So we've been living in that world for quite some time. And and yeah, that's their their contribution towards that that system that has, I guess, has been part of the game for a while, so I don't expect some any backlash from that.
Yeah, Coler, if I if I could address that for just a second too, right, that you're you're right that we end up owning it, but that we have to also remember who we are, right? Like LPEA isn't an investor-owned utility wherein, you know, our bondholders or Wall Street are paying for that. Our other members, you know, it's it's effectively one member subsidizing another for that kind of as a conduit. So yes, the person who's receiving the development, you know, LPEA, LPA, the entire cooperative owns it, so that that money is sort of coming from other members, not does that make sense too? I mean, that's always been my sort of pushback on that.
It makes sense to me too, and I think also another key point is that LPA is going to maintain this. And it's fairly responsible for it unless there's abuse as far as the developer part, so. Yes, it does. So just if you just keep in mind, Dan, let me get around to it if I could talk about the policy itself at whatever time that's good.
Thank you, Coler. I'll
Thank you.
Get that feedback from you. So let me jump on to, you know, and once again, this is just throwing some ideas out there. We were, it was asked of us just to say, you know, if you were to do something, what would it look like? So that's that's what we're trying to go down a path of discovery on. And we've had, like I said, several people approach us and talk to us on what we could do. So what this could look like is that there are several pilot projects by several, I mean, these these four here that that we we felt were were good things that could do the community some some real good that we'd like to look at and fund through our innovative project fund. Because these aren't just providing a subsidy. This is, this is true, I'll say R and D type of type of work where we're really looking at, you know, what what does this cost a member to install this on an affordable unit? What does it cost to put in energy storage and to be able to do with this what we would like to do with it? And so that's why we thought it was a good use of the innovative project fund to maybe let's let's take a deep deeper dive on these four projects and see what that comes back with. You know, and we talked, you could, you know, this isn't a foregone conclusion by any means, but one source of funding we could say is that instead of, you know, the cost recovering from the developers paying their way could be used to offset some of these. But regardless, what would the the path forward would look something like, hey, let's play with these these four projects here, see what that looks like in 23? And then if this is something that looks like it it holds merit, then that comes to the board in the form of a budget. We would come to you within our 2024 budget process. There would be a line item for projects such as this. That's when the discussion really, when the rubber hits the road, is this something that we want to do? So I just wanted to paint that that picture for you. This is not, you know, passing the line extension policy does not mean you're approving this program by any means. But I would like to let you know that that, hey, we we see some some promise in this, just like we did the Animus View water heater project that we did. That let's see how this works. We're especially excited about the the timber age using the the laminated laminated wood products that has some huge potential to it. And other workforce housing, and these are spread all over our service territory. So we thought that was a a good representation as well. So you know, what we're saying is that we're going to look at these projects this year and we'll we'll see what kind of story we can bring to you when it comes time to budget money in 2024, and that's when we'll have some some good discussion on it. And Sue?
I too, I'm really surprised to see this being part of this presentation today. So personally, I did not think we should do the Animus project that we did because it doesn't benefit all of our members. I, like some of the others, would rather see us withhold those funds, keep our rates down. Where it benefits everyone, not just a few. So I guess the question I have is since this is separate from the policy that we're actually talking about today, will this be brought before the board for a vote or it sounds like you just are going to go ahead and do it, whether we want you to or not? So
Well, certainly if we have a, if we need to budget for additional funds to make this happen, we we can do so. They, these are things that we're feeling is a good use of our existing innovative project fund that we have set aside to find out how to best control some of these energy storage projects and and do some of these items here. So that's why you know, these these pilot projects were not necessarily something that we were, you know, coming to the board for, because we felt that that was covered under the previous approval of the innovative project fund. Graham, do you have any other comment on that?
Yeah, so, um, hang on one second, I'm pulling that. So the Innovative Projects Fund does we're, you know, the staff presents projects for consideration of the board, right? So under Policy 203. So when we get to the point where these are a little more solidified, sort of, it's an opportunity for the, is a it's not like a full grant type thing, but it's something that we might need to sort of.
I should have let you speak for me then.
Yeah, so I mean, I think, I mean, I think, you know, as my understanding of when we worked on these things, they're in very, there's, they're not instead of shovel-ready, they're not quite check-ready yet, right? And so I think when it comes like Dan is saying, we've got this innovative project fund staff, you know, thinks this aligns with the innovative project fund criteria, and we'll probably present them to you when they're ready for presentations. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation and yeah, I, like others, I think the changes suggested in the line extension policy are are good ones. I support them. You know, I'd I'd just like to kind of point out one that for years, LPA has had a policy, it still does until we change it here later this or next week in which incentives were provided for economic development, came out of the rate base. We saw the numbers there, right? So you call them subsidies, incentives, whatever, right? The policy change will remove those. And those were all cons, in in, you know, instituted with the idea that they would provide a benefit to the overall members. It's an investment that produced ideally incentives for line extensions and so forth, to service more homes, increase our customer base, increase our power consumption and so forth, that ended up being a a benefit for the members, not a direct sort of you know, one cent reduction or half of one cent reduction in your rate. But the time for those as useful incentive seems to be over. It looks like it was over a while back. We've been letting that go. Right now, we have the option to say, okay, what do we do with those types of incentives? And my my own feeling is that yeah, we are going to recover a cost by ending those incentives. Revenue against the cost. How can we utilize that same value for economic development in a more effective way? So we can say that, you know, we don't want to do that or we whatever board can decide, but in fact, we have been doing it, right? It's not like this is something new. We have been actively involved in trying to do that. But just not as effectively. And what the staff in this second presentation, it seems to me, are doing is saying, here, we're going to model and test some ways to do this more infect effectively, to invest in a way that will have a result that will benefit all the members, maybe not at the outset, but based upon what is learned and how those investments return to us, it will provide that benefit for all members. So I tend to disagree with people's comments that oh, we're subsidizing one and now just subsidizing another, and it's not helping all the members, right? We, as a board, should ensure that that is, of course, uh, something we can measure as a result from these investments, right? And I thank the staff for bringing back the line extension policy for changes because it clearly wasn't having that effect, right? So that's a an example to me of what of how something worked in this regard. I I think I, you know, half a million dollars is a lot of money. But it would not really effectively change anyone's rate at all by just applying it to the rate base, right? It would not be measurable. Whereas an investment in what we all are seeing is deep changes in the electric industry is a wise move on the part of the staff, in my opinion. And I think we need to support that. I'll I'll add one other thing, which is and I doesn't need an answer now, Dan, but and and but it's sort of along the lines of are there infrastructure? Electrical infrastructure needs around generation, rooftop generation and others, as well as this beneficial electrification? Are there constraints that some of this money could be applied to that infrastructure that might free up some of those constraints? I didn't see that in here or anything, but it doesn't need an answer now, but I would just offer that as another it doesn't need an answer now, but I would just offer that as another possible utilization of that cost recovery. So.
Understood.
For listening to me.
Thank you. Well, I think we're we're getting a taste of the philosophical aspects of all this. And so it's it's good to hear that that feedback. It sounds like there's more philosophical discussion to have on this program more so than the line extension. I hear good alignment on the line extension. I'm happy to to hear that. And so I did, Joe, I see your hand. Let me just get to wrap up this presentation and we'll we'll get to you there. Just we do have a motion recommendation. It's very simple. And it's if we can bring to the board, if we do have alignment on the line extension policy, it's I'm able to prove this as presented and Joe, if you've got another question, I can reference a slide, I will. If not, I'll turn the slideshow on.
I just wanted, I like what Tim was saying, but I just wanted to ask ask you, Tim, I mean, you don't see putting this into the rate stabilization fund as as a real good alternative here to you know, to this to what we're doing? Given what we know about what's happening with Tri-State?
I guess my personal opinion is that I mean, I wouldn't, I think it'd be better than not utilizing it, but I my view is that we can, we can use this as an investment. And it has, you know, what I think maybe we're missing is maybe over the times that we've discussed the strategic goals and the economic development one. I didn't recognize this as an economic development investment we've been making already, and I think I'd like to see that continue. And what the staff is proposing, I think, will be investments that will provide a benefit to all the members, you know, take take the school bus, for example, right? Its ability to shave peak, one school bus, right? And the investment, the two hundred thousand dollar investment that a pile electric made to provide vehicle to grid. I mean, that saves every member some money on peak demand shaving, right? I don't know yet what those numbers are. At some point, I hope that the staff will bring that back to us. But that's probably a ten year or more return on that battery. That's that's a benefit to all of us. We shave the peak, our prices go, our costs go down. Well, under what I heard from some members of the board is, well, we shouldn't have done that. Right? We shouldn't have done that, or what happens in Animus View? Well, then we're leaving on the table the opportunity to 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 test and figure out in our service territory, whether those kinds of things can provide a substantial benefit to all of our members. I think that's not exercising our fiduciary duty as a board to not consider or to say we will not consider those kinds of investments.
So so should we, should we direct staff to be really specific, like, let's buy another, let's use this money to buy another school bus or something? I I just
I think
in my opinion, you know, it's just, it's very, you know, it it's, there's just a lot of parts to it. I and I'd rather see something really if we're going to go that direction, see something really specific, you know, like that, let's let's buy another school bus. I think that would pay for one, I think, but.
I guess, if you're asking me that question, my my response is is that I think we as a board should not kind of micromanage. I think Dan and his
Well, I don't see that as micromanaging, but.
Well, I'm just cautioning that since you asked, that they've come up with a proposal that they think is a a good use of that, and it's a proposal that we can all work on, but anyway, I I sort of trust them to know more than I do, but I guess.
Carl, I think you might provide us some clarification on capital budgets versus operating budgets.
Yes, thank you, Dan. The to use, this is kind of accounting. I don't want to call it, you know, minutia, because it is important, but if we were doing something like the rate stabilization fund, it would actually have to be somewhat different. Because in order to fund the rate stabilization fund and satisfy our audit requirements, you have to make an entry into your income statement. As we saw, which you guys voted on at the last board meeting, you actually have to reduce your income by that amount. And because this is a cash saving, this four hundred and seventy odd thousand, I I forget the exact number, but let's say half a million isn't an income statement expense, it's a capital cash item. So you could put the cash to one side and have it in, you know, a separate account or something, but it would not, you wouldn't be able to increase the rate stabilization fund without actually making some sort of entry to your income statement. I know that's, you know, getting into the accounting nuts and bolts, but that's just how it works.
Yeah, I'm I'm loving the conversation, and it'll be interesting when we start talking about the twenty twenty four budget about how this will will work going forward, and I think we need to 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 keep in mind, because I think we are from very different places as far as that goes. I would like to make a make the motion. I just want to check, is it easier if I make the motion now and then have Kohler make his changes, or should we ask Kohler to make his changes, and then we make the motion?
Well, we can't do a motion in a cow.
Yeah, so, yeah, this is, this is what I was thinking, right? Kohler's grammatical changes and editorial changes will change how it's presented, right? So I think we're going to get to the final draft here. And then and then on Wednesday, it'll just be a simple I move to approve as presented, right? So I think.
So so just to support Kirsten's point of view, are we gonna, so we're gonna bit twiddle some of the wordsmithing? Maybe end this meeting with a straw poll so that there's alignment, and there's no surprises at the board meeting? Is that is that constructive? Okay, so let's do it that way.
Holly, did you have one more question there?
Yeah, I did. I just wanted to say I also appreciate the philosophical discussion that was just happening, and I think it's going to have to happen in more depth, to tell you the honest truth, really soon. Last little tidbit, you had four potential projects lined out on that last slide. Now, the first two for Bayfield and for one I did not recognize, I'm sorry, I'm guessing La Pata County somewhere. They both talked about being all electric. Now, does Pagosa, the the Chris Mountain one, are they talking about that?
I know Black Hills is fighting hard on that one.
Thank you. That's a, that's like, yeah, you've said enough. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Well, John, I think that wraps up what I had to present here. If we could do that straw poll, that gives us an indication where we're headed and have a a motion made in the board meeting then. And I'll get I'll get with Kohler to to work on that wordsmithing.
Okay, so let's ask for a show of hands as a straw poll for those that, if this motion were called as described, would vote yes?
Holly is a yes.
All right. And if if called, would vote no? And if called, would abstain? Okay, well, this is very constructive, Dan, as usual. Excellent work on being super prepared and well thought out, so I think we're all grateful for that. Okay. Is there any other business for this cow? Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not sure how the board meeting is going to handle this, but as far as discussing, you know, the second part of of, you know, how the four hundred sixty thousand dollars might be used, I would just like to say if if we do that, I I think we need to be really specific with staff. And 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 and, you know, I think Tim makes some good points and the accounting stuff. Carl, I have no idea what you're talking about, but thank you. And but I I just want to make sure that we're specific, and so staff isn't trying to figure out what the heck we're we're asking, so that would be my request.
Good call. Thank you. Bob, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just like to suggest that 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 second item maybe not not be a part of getting this policy passed on next Wednesday, and I I'm inclined to want to support investing in smart ways to learn about how to better utilize D E R and et cetera. So I'm I'm in Tim's camp on that. It probably would be just an opinion, let's get the policy that as proposed in place and passed, and then set up an an agenda item to talk about what what to do there. And I'm also inclined to be broad in terms of giving staff authority to to wisely use that money. It's it's kind of how you want to think about the benefit of all members, you know, getting smarter about how to use technology and how to save energy and and maybe having one effect be that some more, some subset of folks that really needs to help get a little bit of help, but the whole of L P A benefits from getting smarter about how to use electricity. So anyway, let's vote and then have a separate discussion about the.
Yeah, that's how that's how it's currently agended, Bob. So when when Wednesday rolls around, we will only vote to approve the line extension. This is just sort of a preliminary conversation about, you know, where some of those savings might be allocated, so.
But does that mean, Graham, though, I mean, will we be talking in depth about the second topic, or is that for
No, that's the for future agendas. That is not on the, that's not on the full board meeting at all.
Okay, it could be either way, but just so they're handled separately, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. That's it for Dan. Got it? You good?
So I guess so. The next step, we're going to get Kohler's editorial comments, and we will recirculate that to the board as soon as we possibly can into your board packet, so that when you've had time to sort of review the the final, the final final that's presented, right? So the the motion that we proposed is approve as presented, right? And what we anticipate being presented will be slightly different from what you've seen up to this point, because Kohler has some editorial changes to make, and and so we will circulate a red line and a clean copy to everyone so that you can see those changes. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yes. Okay.
Kohler, I'll reach out to you here next thirty minutes. So I know you've got something afterwards coming up, but I'll get you in the prime next thirty minutes.
Okay, then I think we are done.
Sounds like it to me.
Terrific. All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, guys. I appreciate everybody's work. And again, thank you again to staff.
Thank you, everyone.